Good evening, everyone. I would like to follow to order the November 5th, 2018 Hingham School Committee meeting. Just before we begin, I have a couple of things I wanted to let folks know. As you may notice, Dr. Gallo is not here this evening, and she wanted us to let you know that she is actually in the hospital. So please keep her in your thoughts. She will be fine, and Dr. Janie and John will be here tonight to guide us through the meeting, but just wanted people to let folks know. And then also, just before we move on to the agenda, I wanted to take a moment to remember one of the former school committee members, Chrissanne Gregoire. She passed away October 10th, and she had a memorial service this past weekend. Chrissanne had served on the Hingham School Committee for over 25 years. That is an amazing accomplishment personally, and just really an amazing testament to civic responsibility. She was well-known for being an accessible and caring presence for administrators, teachers, staff, parents, and students, particularly students with special educational needs and their caregivers. And while most of us on this committee didn't have a chance to serve with Chrissanne, we will all endeavor to carry on the work that she undertook to ensure the success of every student, and we will strive to fulfill her legacy of decorum, dedication, and graciousness that she leaves behind. So thank you, Chrissanne, for your service, and we will remember you fondly on the Hingham School Committee. All right, so moving on to the agenda. Item number two is approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee planning meeting held on September 15th, 2018.
Second. Thank you, Carrie. Any discussion? Questions, comments? Good, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, move on to item number three, questions and comments. Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed, although I will make a note, tonight we will be going over Dr. Gallo's evaluation, and that is not open for public comment. But if anyone else here this evening has any questions, comments, or anything to address, all right, and seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, the superintendent's report, which tonight will be given by Dr. Libola.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just a few items to bring to your attention that are in your packet. The first is, included in your packet is a copy of the ACT results, which will be covered in more depth by Heather Rodriguez, our Director of Counseling, maybe the next meeting when she covers the College Board Assessment Report, but they're there for your information, as well as communications relative to the Adams, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Those scholarships are provided to graduating seniors in Massachusetts who have earned a score of advanced, first of all, have to be in the top 25 percent of their cohort in grade 10, and have to have at least one advanced score and proficient or advanced on the others. And so with our current senior class, 77 students have been awarded the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, which equals about 27.2 percent of the class. Now, those scholarships provide tuition, remission, support for state school, but do not cover all the associated fees and such, but we are happy that our students, and particularly the proportion of students graduating, have achieved that goal in Massachusetts. The other thing to bring to your attention is on Thursday evening, 6:30 over in the Town Hall, we do have a forum for our incoming kindergarten class parents. We have communicated up with the local preschools, as well as our preschool, to let our families know. It's been posted on Facebook, as well as distributed out to all the local schools, and that's to cover, our kindergarten teachers will be there, similar to last year's information session, to let parents know about readiness skills, the kindergarten curriculum, as well as our guidelines relative to enrollment. So that's scheduled for Thursday evening, and we hope to have a good turnout. If anyone's listening, please feel free to attend, particularly if you're a first-time kindergarten enrollment here in Hingham. And the last point, just to bring to your attention, is in your packet you have the information from the Social Educational Collaborative that we are a member district of, and an update from them relative to the operations of the collaborative. You have some just notes of interest on the cover, as well as a current update of their financial status. And if there are any questions about that, I can feel free to pass those on to the collaborative and get back to you, should there be any need for clarification.
Great, thank you very much. Item number five, communication. So first communication is received by the superintendent?
Yes, and we do have a couple to bring to your attention. The first being, on October 17th, we received a communication from William Galvin, the Secretary of State, requesting in preparation for the 2020 U.S. Census to get a sense of the languages that were spoken here in Hingham. And so we compiled that report, submitted it last week, and you do also have an attachment outlining those languages that are spoken in the district. I think everything from French, and Portuguese, Spanish, all the way to Roturo, Mandarin, Swahili, and Turkish. So we submit that information to the Secretary of State, so we can ensure that when the census comes, that they have the materials in the appropriate languages for the languages spoken here in the community. The second thing to bring to your attention is a communication that we received from Derek Smith. It's exciting this spring, as the eighth grade prepares for their annual trip, that they actually have two options to look at. There's the sort of the traditional on-the-road trip to Washington, D.C., and then on to Philadelphia, or for those students who choose or elect to stay local, a series of events and activities local. We're lucky that we live here in just the side of Boston with the history that we have, and so there are two different options available for students in the eighth grade, and there is an information session for those families of the eighth grade students this coming Wednesday, in case anyone would like to attend to learn more about those options.
Thank you. For student communications, Emma Quilty couldn't be here tonight, so we don't have an update from Emma, but she'll be at our next meeting. And then I did not have any other communications, so we move on to item number six, which is 6.1, to receive the Plymouth River School Improvement Plan for 2018-2019, and an update on 2017-2018 progress.
Yes, we are very excited to have here with us Principal Melissa Smith, who will present to you an update, I'll figure out how to do this, of the school improvement plan. And bear with me, here we go. Melissa, do you copy?
Good evening, everyone. Here with you tonight is the Plymouth River Assistant Principal, Charlene Fabrizio. And last year, we had three goals, and I'm excited to present to you the outcomes of those goals, and also to present the proposed goals for this coming school year. So here's our mission statement, and the goals that we developed certainly met our mission statement. The mission of the Plymouth River School Community, where children are treasured, is to foster a love of learning in an innovative, cooperative climate, which empowers all students to be competent, productive, caring, and responsible citizens. Here are some of the people who contributed to the plan, some school council members from last year and this year, and additional input from other staff members, and of course our school committee liaison, Ed. School improvement goal number one, to provide high-quality instruction and assessment that addresses individual student needs and focuses on closing achievement gaps using innovative techniques. We always focus on high-quality instruction, and Plymouth River has historically had high achievement, but we thought that to have an emphasis on closing the achievement gaps in our subgroups would be something that we really wanted to take a look at. So how we did that, we analyzed multiple assessments, we determined an action plan, and we looked for curriculum gaps, how to increase growth and achievement for all students, but in particular those subgroups. We provided extra literacy support, K-5, and we did that through in-class instruction, RTI groups, and some Tier One morning groups. We introduced math tiered support in grade five, and we put into a plan, a K-5 math tiered plan, and luckily this year we have the math tutors to support that. So even though this goal technically, we said it was completed, we certainly will continue this because it worked out well for us. We introduced the math workshop model, thanks to our math specialist, and we piloted that in kindergarten and grade four, and continued all math supports, such as extra math, Math Olympics, some math coaching, where the math specialist goes in and coaches the classroom teacher, and Math Plus for an extension. So the outcome, we had a really great outcome. The Department of Education actually classified us as a school of recognition, and you could be recognized in three areas, high achievement, high growth, or significantly exceeding the targets, and we were recognized for that. Only 52 schools were recognized, and we met, not only met the targets, but we exceeded the targets in all of our subgroup areas, so we were very pleased with that. Overall, for all student achievement, we decreased the amount of students in the not-meeting expectations, and we increased in exceeding. So we really got it on both ends. And students with disabilities, we had zero not-meeting in grades three and five in both ELA and math, so we were very pleased with that. Just here are a few photos from a family math and technology night. We were able to showcase some of our computer science initiative, and have great family engagement that night, which was wonderful. Goal two was to create a safe learning environment by focusing on the social-emotional well-being of all students in order to foster academic success. So some of the things that we did, we had monthly themes, and we communicated that through parent newsletters. At all-school meeting, we had some skits and some poems, and every day during morning announcements, we talked about the theme, so it was definitely repetitive, and the students really latched on to that. We had our first annual sneak peek in grades K to five, where students came and saw their classroom before school opened, and that was a first, and that was very well-attended. We hosted school-wide performances that pertain to the social-emotional themes of the month, thanks to the PTO. We expanded some professional development with our teachers on these topics. We revisited our office referral procedures, so that it was more of a learning experience. And also through the BU surveys, we promoted the surveys, had a great turnaround for that, which was great because we were able to analyze a lot of the data that came back, we had a good population, and we were able to take proactive measures and plan interventions. Here are some examples of some of our school-wide themes, and what I tried to do in collaboration with the PTO is I purchased some literature to go along with some of these. So she persisted, every classroom got a copy of this book in March for Perseverance, and we're all wonders. We talked about celebrating differences, and this is sort of a K-1 version of the book Wonder, so that the teachers were able to use the literature to help promote some of these themes. And goal number three, promote and maintain a culture which embraces the home-school-community connection. We've always had a great home-school connection, but we thought that it was important to really increase that community piece. And so what we did, we did a couple things in this area. We teamed up with the PTO to streamline communication to families and the community. I created a staff weekly newsletter and a shared calendar, so everybody was on the same page, knew what was going on. We had a review, the school council looked at the PRS website, and got rid of some links that were old or outdated, just tried to make sure that the information was easy for parents to find. We increased community service partnerships with some local groups and local media resources, and we have monthly slideshows that highlight some of this learning. Here's an example of one of the community outreach events that we had. We celebrated Arbor Day, and that was wonderful. We had Joan Machino there, and behind the tree can't see is Mary Power, but we had some local people come and speak at this event, and it was great. We had some students who wrote poems. In the middle, somebody did a tree sculpture, and we had all these contests, and over to the left there, we had that student guess how many rings were in that piece of the tree. So it was fun. Here are some other examples of community service projects. We had Cleanup Day, Birthday in a Box, the Hingham Food Pantry. We made dog toys for animal shelters. We continued our partnership with the Senior Center, serving breakfast. We helped Houston when they had the Hurricane Little Princess Party, and we collaborated with the Jimmy Fund, and we had our Red Sox Pride Day and collected money for the Jimmy Fund. Going into this year, we used the tool Conditions for School Effectiveness to do an assessment on how we will strategically come up with the goals going into this school year. So these are some of the things that we looked at to develop the three goals going into this school year. So goal number one still is academic, but to provide high-quality instruction and assessment that addresses individual student needs, focuses on closing achievement gaps, and increases achievement using innovative techniques. So very similar to last year's goal one, but we definitely want to continue that because we saw a lot of growth, and there's some action steps that we could continue and keep going in that direction. The Computer Science Immersion Initiative is going to be a great tool for us, and we've really already seen wonderful things. The classrooms are technology-rich, and the students are just able to use technology to learn differently and to show what they know using some of these new tools. The literacy and math team, they are providing consistent expectation for data meetings, so that we can guide the flexible groupings that's happening, and have differentiated instruction strategies within the classroom. Provide literacy and math interventions to targeted students through that Tier Three morning block, and provide before-school tutoring in literacy and math. This was something that we did last week, or two weeks ago. We had our STEAM Week, and that was actually a statewide initiative through Governor Baker, and we usually have STEAM Week in June, but we wanted to have it earlier to go along with this date. So here are some of the activities. The middle, they were extracting DNA from a strawberry, which was pretty cool. Top right, that's the stop-motion with our art teacher, Ms. Kelfer. And the bottom, you can see that, it's a little bit blurry there, but we had a dad who's an anesthesiologist, and he was showing some of his equipment, and over to the left was a physics lesson with roller coasters. So it was a fun week for all. Goal two, nurture the social-emotional development of all students and provide interventions to foster social and academic success. This is great because it really goes along nicely with the Toolbox Initiative. So again, we're going to set a monthly-wide goal, but this time, we'll align it to a Toolbox Tool and the Zones of Regulation, so that it all ties in together. We'll use literature that supplements the social-emotional learning standards, and host enrichment shows that pertain to the social-emotional development. We will develop a social-emotional committee, and administer a screening tool, which will be happening in the next month or two, to identify targeted groups and the skills that those groups need. And goal three, to strengthen the school culture which embraces the home-school-community connection. We'll use technology and social media to highlight school-wide activities. We'd like to bolster an inclusive atmosphere to include new families and EL families. We'd like to enhance the Metco experiences for all students. We'd like to increase partnerships with local agencies, which we've had a lot of new partnerships, but we still want to increase that. And last year, I hosted a preschool coffee before the kindergarten registration period, and that was really successful, so I would like to continue that. It just was able to, I was able to answer some questions and just have informal chats with parents before the registration process began. Here's, this happened last week, it was last Friday, I brought a crew over to Harvard Media, and they have been wonderful. You can see that my crew, we call ourselves the PRS News Crew, and they present all exciting information coming out of Plymouth River. So we went over there, and they showed us how to use the green screen technology, and then the little photo in the middle, they were so excited. When we got back to the school on Friday night, they wanted to make their own green screen, so they did, and we were able to use a green screen app that we have on the iPads, and this little boy was reporting from Fenway Park. So they thought that that was pretty cool. So if you want any more information, we have a lot of information already out there, all of the video updates, the monthly slideshows, and some of the videos that my news crew did. There's a link on our website, PRS Happenings. All of our school council notes are posted on the website as well. We have a Facebook page that I try to update on a regular basis, and new this year, I just started a Twitter page. And that's all I have. So does anyone have any questions?
I just want to say a couple things. First of all, congratulations, great job, keep it up. And I also wanted to congratulate you and your team at Plymouth River for being recognized as one of the 52 schools, but I didn't have access to elementary school.
Thank you, Carlos. Thank you.
And the other thing is, I wanted to let you know that the long-range planning, along with John's, presenting to the CPC on the 15th concerning your playground. We hope to, we have applied for a grant from them, we are hoping that they will help us out, so we just wanted to give you the heads-up, that we are looking to renovate your playground to make that ADA compliant.
That's great. Yeah, we've been having talks about that during the budget process as well, so that's good to hear. Thank you.
Let's hope that we get them in.
Anything else? No? Great. Thank you.
Melissa, thank you so much. You're excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Wonderful job.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you so much. Item 6.2, to receive the Foster School Improvement Plan for 2018-2019, and update the 2017-2018 plan progress. Sorry.
So.
All right, Janie's coming.
Here you go, Beth. I'd like to welcome Dr. Beth Wilcox for her first presentation, actually, in front of the committee as the principal of Foster Elementary. She's new to our team, and take it away, Dr. Wilcox. Welcome, Hingham.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am here tonight to present the Foster Elementary School 2017-2018 Completed Plan as well, but before I start, I'd like to introduce my Assistant Principal, Jen Newell, who is here with us tonight. So Foster School's core values. At Foster School, our students will enjoy the process of learning, constantly strive to meet their potential, and become lifelong learners, be responsible, and demonstrate respect for self, others, and property, practice critical thinking skills to solve problems, and have a strong sense of community, both inside and outside of school. And that's one thing that I have definitely noticed since starting at Foster, is the strong sense of community that the students have, both inside of school as well as outside of school. The Foster Elementary School Council members for 2017-18 are listed, and Dr. Debbie Steller, the principal, had worked with this team, as well as with the team, to create the goals for 2017-18, as well as the 2018-19 goals. The members listed for 2018-19 will work on the 2019-2020 goals. To develop our school improvement plan, we go through a process of collecting data, and the data is gathered from looking at information from MCAS data, we take information from members who are attending meetings, we take information from the budget process, as well as input gathered via surveys and focus groups. We also consider the district's strategic and professional development plans, Title I surveys, as well as focus group suggestions. This year, to note the enrollment data, we are taking a look at the enrollment data as we go throughout the process as well. This year, we have currently 485 students at Foster, which is a slight increase from The goals for the 17-18, as well as 18-19 school year are the same, however, what we're doing with those goals is, some of the goals have, parts of the goals have been completed, where other parts are still in progress. So our first goal is to increase student achievement in literacy, refine instructional strategies, assessments, and materials as the Hingham Public Schools transitions to the second year of the K-5 Journeys Reading Program, and this was in 17-18. Increase student achievement in mathematics, continue to refine instructional strategies, assessments, and materials as the Hingham Public Schools transitions to the third year of K-5 Everyday Math Program. Our third goal, foster a community of learners, to continue to develop responsible learners who participate in instruction, attend to instruction, and pursue interest and meet potential. The fourth goal is foster a community focused on service, continuing to develop an understanding and appreciation of giving to and supporting others through service learning. And lastly, foster a community committed to global awareness, continue to develop an understanding and appreciation for a more environmentally aware community, nation, and world for living and learning. As part of our first goal, to increase student achievement in literacy, we have provided opportunities for, to take part in study groups for close reading and written responses to texts, instructional alignment of Wilson Programs to Journeys Reading, which those two goals are for the teachers, and the teachers have taken part in those goals. Students, or the other, I'm sorry, students work with the other goals in Battles of the Books in Grades Four and Five, and on the left-hand side, there's a picture of Mrs. Matthews with her fourth-grade students, and that is her team for Battle of the Books for fourth grade last year. We have Poetry Palooza, which takes place each year during Dr. Seuss's birthday week in March, so that was completed, and we found that to be a success, and it will continue. We are piloting a program, NWEA, which is an online assessment tools, and we started the pilot last year, and we're continuing that pilot this year, looking at different tools that are aligned to our standards that assess students' growth. We have our Thousand Book Club, Dr. Seuss Breakfast, which has also been completed, and we will continue that. Our annual Family Literacy Night is tied in conjunction with our book fair, so students will come in, and they have different activities that they partake in during the annual Family Literacy Night. And this year, we completed a summer literacy program, where students came in throughout the summer to focus on different literacy skills and strategies, and also trying to enhance the engagement and fun of literacy. Our second goal, to increase student achievement in mathematics, we were reviewing the materials, assessments, and strategies to maximize student learning. We provided opportunities to expand staff member understanding of everyday math through modeling, presentation, collegial discussions. This is also in working with our math tutors, as well as with Jess Kitchen, who is working in our school. We expand technology to further the math, we expand our technology to further our math goals, including some online math sites, and working with our smart boards, review and reflect our math fact fluency strategies, target math instruction, our targeted math instruction model offered at grades K through five. We have also our Math Olympiad Program, which is completed and in progress. Again, we use the NWEA Online Assessment, which is a pilot for students who are at-risk Title I and special education students, to determine the progress being made towards their goals. Summer Math Coach Program for students entering grades, first grade through fifth grade, was also completed over the summer. Summer Math Coach Program for students entering K grades, first grade through fifth grade was also completed over the summer. The third goal is a community of learners, developing responsible learners. We continue our Homework Club, which takes place Monday through Fri-, Monday through Thursday. Each afternoon, students are welcome to take part in the Homework Club and that's an opportunity where students stay after school for an hour and they work with some of our teachers to complete their homework. We are refining and implementing Second Step, Steps to Respect, Responsive Classroom and as well as, um, those, those different items have been completed. Foster implemented Habits of Mind as well. And we continue Fostering Good Citizens Plan, part of the Respect, Responsibility and Building Relationships Committee. The social thinking professional development implementation has been completed and we had mid-year reflections at Grades Three, Four and Five for Respect, Responsibility and Relationships. Staff and students' review of recess program, K through five, including trouble-free playground and play-fit strategies have been completed. And we continued school-wide monthly celebration programs to include recognition and celebration of Habits of Mind, Service, Fostering Good Citizens, Memorial Day and Honoring Veterans Day. So, as part of our developing responsible learners, we have Foster's Finest, which we honor every Friday. So, here are pictures of some of our Foster's Finest students. We celebrate those students and we have our, their certificates and we also take pictures of the students every Friday. Our goal four, a community focused on service. Classroom communities establish at least one service activity during the year. This was completed last year. We foster, provide families with information in, for an in-home school connection about service opportunities, invite community organizations to share service opportunities, which is in progress. And our students participate in a variety of service activities, including the Hingham Food Pantry, Trick or Treat for UNICEF, Candy for the Troops, the Jimmy Fund, Anton's Quote Drive, um, book drives, as well as, um, working with the homeless veterans throughout the year. I will say that this week, although this is reflecting on last year's plan, we are continuing to do some of these service projects and we have Candy for the Troops and there are boxes and boxes of candy for the troops in our hallways, which is great. We have a lot of candy to donate. Foster Community Committed to Global Awareness. We continue to develop an understanding and appreciation for a more environmentally aware community, nation and world for living and learning. So, we are continuing to create awareness and responsibility to protect the environment from harmful products and commit to the actions via the three Rs. We continue to reduce the school's use of plastic bottles through the Foster School Hydration Station located in the cafeteria and associated fundraiser and awareness campaign, campaigns. Pictures below show our green team, which meets on early release days. And on the right-hand side, we had our annual Bike to School Day. So, the goals for 2018 and 2019, the school council last year determined that there was a need to continue those. So, the, the plan for this year is to continue the goals. As we look to this year, we are going to continue literacy engagements such as the Poetry Palooza, the Thousand Book Club and the Dr. Seuss Breakfast. We also want to take a look at supporting the implementation of Journeys Reading Program and exploring the integration of other strategies as appropriate, taking a look at our students and their reading materials, assessments and strategies. We want to make sure that they are prepared to read any type of text, any type of genre. So, making sure that our instructional strategies include a plethora of different, um, materials that complement the Journeys Program. We are continuing to pilot the NWEA Online Assessment for our students, um, to monitor their growth. As part of our math, we're continuing our Math Olympiad Program. We are continuing our targeted math intervention. We are looking at improving this with the implementation of our new math tutor position this year. So, we are able to target more students for the math intervention. We are continuing to expand our technology as well as looking to implement a family steam night. On the left-hand side, there's a picture of our Word of the Week. So, our math coach is focusing on a math word of the week to create some community discussion on a specific word that we can talk about, talk about the meaning of the vocabulary of the word and focus on the word itself as a community. And on the right-hand side, some of our kindergarten students are using Osmo as part of their instruction as well. A community of learners, we're going to continue to develop responsible learners. We are continuing the Homework Club. In addition to, um, continuing to refine Responsive Classroom, we are also implementing the Toolbox Program as well, which complements well as part of our HTSS Social Emotional Component. We will continue to implement the Begin, Before School Box Program, which is a student physical fitness program that they were, students work with parent volunteers as well as yoga and meditation. Our monthly school-wide celebration will also continue. And here is a picture of our students and they are showing pictures of what patience is, which was one of our tools for the month of October. As part of our Toolbox Program, we combined the two. So, students were sharing what patience is to them and how they use the patience tool in their day-to-day. A community focused on service, we are continuing to develop an understanding and appreciation of giving to and supporting others through learning. So, again, we are participating in different activities each month to focus on service. This year, new to, um, our continued events, we are also in first grade, one of our first grade teachers has created a kindness club where students in first grade meet monthly and they participate in a group activity, which then, for the month of October, students were making placemats for, um, different community members who receive Meals on Wheels. So, they designed the placemats, they talked about how it would feel if someone was, needed to be cheered up and they created the placemat and then it was laminated. And so, they gave that to Meals on Wheels as part of their service. Really trying to think of others and think of how our actions impact others is a focus. Goal five, the community, a community committed to global awareness. We are going to continue to develop an understanding and appreciation for a more environmentally aware community. We are going to continue the, to commit to the actions via the three Rs. The green team is continuing this year and we are increasing participation this year where halfway, for the first half of the school year, thirty students are participating and then a different thirty students will be participating in the winter and in the spring. We found that there was an, an interest and we wanted to make sure that all students who are interested in the program were able to participate. We are going to, um, identify and support within the Foster Community townwide initiatives that make the community more environmentally friendly. In this picture, we have Mrs. Rapson's Pumpkins and her students, uh, worked with parent volunteers to carve the pumpkins, which we presented and displayed at our Foster Fall Fair. And then students put, placed the pumpkins outside to watch the deterioration of the pumpkins. So, they did, they, the pumpkins did, um, they did kind of attract little critters though. So, some of them had to be removed, but, um, which was also a great discussion about, um, food and what type of food animals eat. And so, um, we have since removed the pumpkins. However, that was the initial purpose of the pumpkins. So, we wanted to end by thanking you for your support as we continue to go through our, some of our initiatives as well as refining what we are already doing. Does anyone have any questions?
I do, actually. Great job, first of all. It looks like you're doing some great work there. I just had a quick question about goal number one. Uh, you said you're incorporating foundations into the Journeys Program. Is, which grades is that, well, that before? Is it all of them or?
It's, so, the, what we're looking to do is we're looking to identify, it, it depends. So, the reason why I say that is just because with reading, the amount of stress, so, foundations has certain components to it that are applicable for students at different levels. So, it depends based on the student need as well as what the purpose of the instruction is for. So, for example, some, a student in fourth grade may need a component of foundations that a student in second grade may not need. So, really, it is based on student need. It might be the phonemic awareness piece component of it. It might be the phonics piece of it. So, we really, the reason why I'm answering the question not with, uh, one answer is because it's really based on student needs. So, taking a look at what's the best parts of the foundations program? And what is our student need and how do we support that?
That's great. So, it's available to everybody depending, whoever needs it.
Right. We want to make sure that our teachers have, our teachers are working together so that if there's something that a student needs, that, that we're providing that.
I think it's great you're doing it.
Thank you.
I'm just, we want you to know and everyone at Foster that we, as a school committee, have decided that most definitely Foster, uh, whether it's a renovation or building a new school is on top of our list as a high prayer priority. And, uh, let's hope that we hear from the MSBA shortly.
Yes.
With a positive answer to our request. Um, if not, we have to be prepared to work with the building committee and other elected officials to see what we're gonna do about Foster. So, just want you to know that we are working collectively.
Thank you.
United, doing something for Foster.
Thank you. And I know that too, to that, that our maintenance, our maintenance, um, people and as well as the custodial staff do an amazing job of maintaining and making sure that the students have what they need with what we have. So, it, it, it's great and I'm looking forward to that. And also just wanted to say that they do great work, um, in keeping us moving forward, so.
Yeah, um, and I don't know how much, since you're new, but I'm curious, I heard about the success of the Journeys Program. But can, is that fully integrated now? Is everyone on board? And Melissa, I don't know if you want to mention anything because, but this is our second year of.
Third year?
Fourth year.
Oh, that long already? Okay.
Yeah, it's fully implemented through all of our classrooms.
But it seems to have had an impact on students in a very positive way. So, and you both mentioned it in your reports, so. It's just, it, so now it's fully there and you're, but you are seeing the positive impacts of that changeover.
The teachers, um.
Melissa, just when I come to a mic.
Since we are a few years in, the teachers have been able to integrate the Journeys, um, stories with science and social studies topics too. So, that's definitely helped put things into context.
Great. And that, and you know, as Carrie's mentioned too, it's great that we're finding the ways of complementing it or whatever the needs of the students are, so.
Right. I think with any program, you learn it and then you find what, how, what, what complements it well and so, that's where we are.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
That's very good.
Alright, um, alright, item six point three is to conduct the superintendent's annual evaluation for the period November 2017 through October 2018. So, um, I had spoken to Dr. Gallo, um, and she and I had gone over her review and the summative review that, um, I put together based on everyone's feedback. And she had asked that we do the evaluation tonight, even though she could not be here. So, um, we will do that. I spoke with MASC, um, and they confirmed that it's appropriate to do it given that she has given her permission and has already reviewed this. Um, so, I will read the summative evaluation that I came up with based on everyone's feedback. The only, and then we can vote on it. If anyone would want to make any changes to it, however, we would, no need to redo it with Dr. Gallo here. So, if everyone's in agreement with how it's prepared, presented, that's great. But I'll read it first and then I'll accept a motion. Okay. So, here we go. So, just a little background. Um, when evaluating performance, the school committee takes into account the feedback provided by Dr. Gallo's leadership team, the superintendent job description, the goals set forth for the year, the rubric for superintendent evaluations and Dr. Gallo's interactions with various stakeholders, including town hall personnel, elected officials, CPAC, parents, staff and students. So, based on a review of all of these metrics, it is clear that Dr. Gallo's career as superintendent reflects an effective record of hiring and retaining highly qualified teachers, successfully negotiating collective bargaining agreements, overseeing and adapting changing curriculum stand, curriculum standards, advocating for and successfully balancing an ever-tightening budget and supporting the educational needs of thousands of students and families from the moment they walk through the doors of a pre-K classroom to the day they march across the field at graduation. Over the past twelve months, Dr. Gallo has seamlessly integrated a significant number of highly, highly qualified new leaders with an experienced, high-performing leadership team that's already in place. She has increased community engagement through public forums, guided faculty and staff through multiple leadership changes, updated policies and procedures to address student and parent concerns, obtained re-accreditation of Hingham High School, worked with her team to establish new social and emotional programming, supported curriculum changes to better prepare students for their future and encouraged the important work of the Hingham Tiered System of Support and the Special Education Continuous Improvement Task Forces. Of course, leading a school district is challenging work and as in any school district, there can be room for growth and improvement. However, the Hingham Public Schools continue to be recognized as high-performing at local, state and federal levels and the leader of the district should be commended for the things that are done right and are done well. When measured against all of the metrics noted above, Dr. Gallo's work ethic, dedication and proficiency over the past twelve months has continued to drive this district forward and maintain our status as a high-performing district. In addition, the commitment of time, energy and experience that Dr. Gallo has brought to the Hingham Public Schools throughout her years as superintendent is unparalleled and serves as an example to other superintendents. Therefore, the Hingham School Committee recognizes Dr. Gallo's performance with a rating of exemplary. So, do I have a motion to accept? Do I have a second?
Second.
And then any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Alright, thank you very much, everyone. And thank you, Dr. Gallo. Alright, um, item six point four, are we?
We're going to the table.
We're going to the table. Item six point five, to receive notification of the Hingham High School's Spanish class overnight field trip to New York City on March twenty-ninth through March thirtieth. That is in people's packets. Any questions or comments on that?
Sounds exciting and very innovative, so.
Absolutely. It is for our students, our students in AP Spanish Literature, AP Spanish Language, as well as Spanish Five, uh, to actually go and, uh, see a play that they've read in, in Spanish as well as participate in a number of local activities, uh, in the New York area. They're gone for one night, maybe early morning, went back late the, uh, the next day, uh, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of March.
Alright, thank you. Um, and then item six point six is to receive notification of the Hingham High School Drama Club Overnight Field Trip to New York City, April fifth through April seventh. That information is also in your packet.
And this is an annual trip. And I think what you have here is the last year's sample agenda, uh, or sample itinerary. Uh, it will follow a very similar model this coming year, but, um, but they don't quite know what shows they're gonna be seeing when just yet.
And just a plug for the Drama Club. You guys, on your, on your seats, everyone saw that there was an invitation for two tickets to the upcoming production at the high school.
Please feel free, hope you'll be able to join us.
Yes. Always put on a great show. Alright, and no other questions on that? Um, alright, well, item six point seven is to receive notification of appointments of Para Educators Emily Brooks, Megan Foot and Lori Salamante at Foster School and Molly Burbank at Plymouth River School, math tutors Cynthia Driscoll, Amanda Harding and Patricia Hagerty at South School, Lauren Popovich, Food Service Technician at Foster School and Colleen Shinney, Kids in Action Teacher. So, welcome and congratulations to all those appointments. Um, does anyone have anything for item seven, which is other items not reasonably known, Forty-Eight Hours?
I received a call, uh, perhaps on Thursday from a Mimbaba community, uh, involved with the Hingham Sport Partnership. And I'm not sure whether, um, the policy, uh, subcommittee had a chance to reveal the policy in terms of, uh, signs around the field. But this in particular has to do with the gym.
Yep.
Um, the, you know, the gentleman had reached out to Dr. Gallo, since she's not here. I'm not sure if anybody else heard anything.
We did, actually. We discussed it at the Policy Subcommittee meeting on, um, Friday, which Dr. Gallo attended and I don't want to steal Kay's thunder if she wanted to talk about it. Well, we, there were still questions about the sign. Right. So, um, we received feedback from that.
I, I can, I can help you with that.
Can we, um, put that, uh, on the agenda for the next meeting? Because I don't want to blindside any, anyone, although. Although, we are bringing it out, but I don't wanna be, you know, if you, if you're not comfortable in speaking about it, we should, um, I just would like to hear more about it, of what, what we are trying to do and recognize our, uh, our partners in town.
Yeah. So, I think unless I miss.
Let me, uh, let me explain it to you. The Hingham Sports Partnership, uh, President, uh, Fred Hesse reached out to Dr. Gallo to put a sign, a banner, actually, in the gym. The policy subcommittee, uh, looked into it. I was tasked to contact, uh, the athletic director, met, uh, Coach Keel in his office. Uh, our policy, which is in place, requires the school committee vote for a sign, a permanent sign, but it does not require a discussion nor a vote for a banner. So, what is gonna be placed, uh, is a banner which is removable. And that's, that's the definition. So, in point of fact, uh, they are proceeding, uh, with, uh, with that particular banner.
Great.
What, wouldn't it the banner say?
What does the banner say?
Or, or what's, what's it?
There is a banner, there is a banner at the field right now. Says HSP, just, this they need. Uh, I think it's proud of our.
I think it also lists the website. Okay. It's just Hingham, HPS, and then I believe it has the website. And that's pretty much it. But.
Yeah. It's a very simple banner. And it's not a permanent.
Fixer?
No, it's not.
It's gonna be taken down at any time.
It's, it's, it'll be below the series of championships that have been, uh, earned by various sporting teams over the years. Uh, there is some strapping up on the wall with little hooks. And the banner will have grommets in it that simply go over the hook. So, it's, it's not a permanent sign. It is, it is removable. Uh, and in fact, it's a banner. It's the same material. It's the same material as a, um, what was the flag? A flag that I have at my house.
Thank you.
If I try hard enough, I'll get you a picture of it. I'm just trying to think where it would be.
The only thing I would mention is this past weekend, we had over 350 students participate in the Hingham Education Foundation Annual Spelling Bee at the middle school. Uh, I was the moderator for the second grade. We had a great competition spirited spelling. You should have been there. If nothing else, and to catch me in a gigantic B costume. But it was a lot of fun and it was a great day, uh, a great, uh, community event. And, um, you'd be very proud of all of our students there demonstrating all their spelling skills. So, it was a great afternoon, uh, full of, uh, community spirit. And the middle school was nice to see alive and well on a Sunday afternoon with younger, some younger students. We had a great display table set up, uh, demonstrating some of the materials and tools from our computer science initiative. And, um, kids were actually able to interact with them and show their parents all the things they've been learning, which created a level of excitement amongst the participants. So, uh, thank you to Hingham Education Foundation for putting on such a wonderful event for our students.
That was a great event. I did the fourth grade last year. I will not lie, it was a little challenging. There were quite a few words that I was like, I would not have been able to spell.
Ogre got the biggest, like, ooh.
All right. Um, all right. No other 48 hour? You're not. All right. Um, so we'll move to subcommittee and project reports. And, okay, I'm gonna start with you.
You're still one minute. Hold on one second.
Nope. Do you want me to start with someone else?
Yes, if you don't mind. We're just zooming. I'm going as fast as I can.
I know. We're zooming through tonight. Um, all right. Um, Ed, would you like to do the report on warrants that we have here?
Um, yes. You'll notice, what, what number is that?
Number eight. Page number eight. Yes. Page eight, signed warrants.
Okay. Well, I, well, what I've done is, and I can't bring it up, um, is I, when I review the, the, the warrants. Thank you. Thank you very much. Ayesha, help me. There were, there were three warrants, uh, since we met last. Uh, and on each one of these, I've tried to itemize a specific item. It, it's recurrent, uh, supplies. But for instance, one is a little bit, first time I've seen that issue. So, in point of fact, on, on S 110518, uh, school supplies, um, our department, the nurse in the athletic department, uh, that particular warrant was, uh, was, 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 had quite a fuel expense. Uh, and there were some electrical supplies, uh, for repairs which I hadn't seen on other warrants. So, as I do the warrants, I'll, I'll, um, pick out something that looks, that looks different as the same thing. Uh, there is a page, depending upon the size of the warrant, and it's not so much the size, the dollar cost, but rather the number of items that might be something to include. And Ayesha and I have talked about this. So, maybe rather than my comments, I'll just get you the, uh, the, uh, a, a, a short spreadsheet on the items. But that's what, that's what those are.
Thank you. Carlos, do you have anything for long range planning?
So, long range planning, um, is coming before the CPC on the 15th.
15th.
If you want to speak on it, you're there.
Oh, uh, okay. So, I've been working hard on a PowerPoint presentation to give on the 15th. Starts, starting at seven o'clock, I think we'll be up around eight o'clock, uh, for the Plymouth River Playground and asking for funds to help us to bring it into compliance with the ADA guidelines. You guys wanna see it ahead of time? Let me know. Or send somebody there so that I can introduce you. That would be great. We'll be in touch. Okay.
I think it would be very appropriate to just mention how hard Libby has worked on this. Several of the, several of us have also worked on it. But Libby, Libby's been the driving force.
That's great. Thank you, Libby.
I would certainly ditto that. Bang up job, Libby. You're doing a great job.
John and I are among the other, others. Hey, Carlos.
Oh, I went to her house. How many hours we spent there?
Thank you very much. That's important and, um, very helpful. So, thank you. Um, Kate, do you wanna do the plans?
Yes. I'm just looking, I'm sorry. I'm multitasking tonight. Um, so, yes, policy did meet. One of the things we did discuss was the sign issue. Um, we also discussed the kinder age policy, kindergarten age policy, um, that we currently have in place. It has been brought up again. And right now, there was a decision not to make any further policy changes, but more procedural changes. And these will be discussed in further detail at the meeting that you're holding on Thursday of this week. So, you had mentioned it at the beginning of our meeting. Just to repeat, that's gonna take place on November 8th at 6:30 in Town Hall, if any of you are interested. Uh, but basically, the change is more if parents are wanting to hold their child back from starting kindergarten, we request that those parents meet with administration before doing so.
So, it'll require?
It'll require it this year. Right. It'll be more, yeah, it'll be required. But it'll be a procedural change, not a policy change. And more details will follow on Thursday. And our next policy meeting, which I was just looking up, is sometime in December. And I don't have it in my calendar yet.
I think it's December 7th.
I will, I, 'cause I, I won't, I.
Remember it was Pearl Harbor Day.
Thank you. December 7th. Um, at what time is that? 10:30?
12:30.
12:30, thank you. And, uh, I'm gonna write this down again. And Community Outreach has a meeting coming up on November 27th at 11:30. There's no updates right now from Community Outreach. So, I think we're waiting, gonna wait to hear back from the screening committee.
Okay.
So, which probably leads to you, Liza.
Well, except, sorry.
Go ahead.
Minutes.
Oh, yes. I meant to mention at the beginning of the meeting, um, we will be, I will be no longer sending you the minutes and asking for edits. Those edits should take place in our meeting. Um, however, I don't, in order to keep our meetings shorter and not longer, I ask you to send any edits that you might have as in a name change or basic grammar edits, just send them to Pam. You will receive the minutes in advance so you can read them, but I will not be asking for edits. The edits will be collected at our meetings. So, if you have content edits, then keep those for the meeting. Does that make sense?
Yep. Okay. Thanks.
Uh-huh.
All right. Uh, yeah. And do you, um, do you wanna do salary negotiations?
Um, so, salary negotiations, um, as a small subcommittee, we don't have a meeting scheduled yet, but we will be eventually getting together. Also, just to review and update the superintendent contract. Um, and I have been in touch with Peter Ebb about getting some input from him. So, then, subcommittee will look at that, the general terms of that, um, just as we're proceeding. And as far as the superintendent's search process is going, the screening committee had their first meeting on Thursday. We're meeting again tomorrow. Um, and we're putting dates in place for when we're going to be interviewing candidates. And I would like you all to, it looks like if you could, on your calendars, uh, Thursday, December 6th, we will be scheduling a salary negotiations subcommittee meeting with the full committee. Um, because if, if all goes according to schedule we have mapped out, um, that would be the night we can announce the finalists. And, and then we would also be, we would be meeting with Nezdek to talk about how we go forth and the, all the steps in place for scheduling site visits and scheduling interviews and, and, and all that with the finalists. So, um.
What date is that?
Thursday, December 6th.
And that would be an evening meeting?
Yeah, evening and evening.
What time, Liza?
Um, probably seven o'clock. Um, but as we nail that down, but as we've met before on that. Um, but just wanted to make sure you guys got that on your calendars. Um, and so far, we're, you know, still on the master schedule. Um, but that's all I can share tonight.
Thank you. Um, S, um, Special Ed Subcommittee, we are going to meet November 14th, 6:00 PM. Um, I'm gonna check with CPAC. I believe they're at the library, but I'll double check. And we'll meet just prior to their meeting. Um, and I will, if you, if either of you, Carrie or Liza, have anything for the agenda, let me know. Um, I have a couple of things and I'll send her on a draft, probably by Wednesday, Tuesday. Okay. Um, any liaison reports now?
I just say, um, oh, actually, East, um, the school council met.
Okay.
And, um, we, since East has been around for about 10 years now, so we're gonna take a fresh look at the mission statement and the core values in addition to the school improvement plan. But it was a good, it was a very good discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Hingham, um, the high school is meeting, uh, on Wednesday.
Wednesday. All right. Do you have anything, Libby, from HEF or from?
Uh, the middle school.
Middle school.
Uh, council didn't happen, so that's gonna be rescheduled.
Okay.
And Jamie just gave the update for HEF. Spelling Bee.
Thank you. All right.
We don't wanna leave out PRS.
No. Not PRS.
The PRS team will be meeting on Monday, November 19th.
Okay. All right.
Um, yeah. November 19th. Sorry. November 19th?
November 19th.
Okay. And that's school council?
That's the school, PRS council.
Thank gosh, I learned typing in school.
I know.
So, I met with South. Yeah, we had the school council meeting. And, um, it was great because I had missed the presentation of, the presentation on the school improvement plan given here. So, she just did another presentation on the school improvement plan. So, um, it was good for me and it was very informational. Good.
And you got, you got mentioned twice by East and.
I did.
Yeah, they had, uh, South representing both. So, that was great.
Ed, Kate, Foster School Council is meeting November 14th.
Ah, okay. Thank you. And quickly, just speaking of South School, I would like to give another shout out to Joyce Schreier, who put together a fantastic presentation for the South School. Many of us were there. Um, she had done hours and hours of research on, um, the original South School. Wouldn't have been called South School, but she, we were referring to it as the 1802. South Parish. South Parish School. Um, and she found some original documents from the school and, um, gave the students, um, and the audience, um, some background on the school, what it would have been like at the time, who the teacher was, what the students learned, the names of the students. She had an enrollment report for that day, for a particular day in, was it 1802?
1802.
1802. Um, she had a map with some of the houses that are still on Main Street that, where the students would have lived who had gone to the school. It was a great presentation she put. It's really, uh, very heartwarming. And the students were, they were fifth grade students and they were just phenomenal. They were so engaged and so well behaved and so respectful. And they had great questions. It was a really great event. So, again, thank you to Joyce, 'cause it was a great presentation.
And the only thing I'll mention, uh, thinking back on that, Michelle,